Lord, I just pray for wisdom and the decisions that are going to be made this evening. Thank you for guiding, conversations and discussions. I just pray your blessing upon this time may be productive, effective, and Jesus.
Amen.
Thank you Pastor.
Please join with me in our pledge allegiance to the flag. Ready to begin? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, roll call.
Mayor Chairman Herrford.
Here.
Mayor Protam, Vice Chairman Toohey.
Here.
Councilmember Commissioner Armbrust.
Here.
Councilmember Commissioner Lane.
Here.
Councilmember Commissioner Sanderson.
Here.
Okay, we were in closed session, so City Attorney, is there anything to report out from closed session?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the record should reflect that the City Council did have its closed session meeting, as stated on the revised notice of special meeting of the West Covina City Council this evening to consider the two matters presented. The first matter was conference with labor negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 5495, 7.6 regarding the various employee organizations listed on the revised notice of special meeting. Record should reflect that all council members were present for this item. Presentation was provided by staff. Direction was provided to staff, but no final action was taken and I have nothing further to report on that item. With regard to the second item, that being conference with legal counsel existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 5495, 6.9A, case of Christopher Chung versus City of West Covina, the record should reflect that a presentation was provided to the City Council. Direction was given by the City Council, however, no final action was taken and I have nothing further to report on that item. And that concludes my report out in closed session.
Thank you. City Manager, do we have any changes to the agenda?
Yes, we have one change, it's item number 10, which pertains to the auto repair in residential zones. There had been some additional information requested, which we just provided to the council, and our recommendation would be this matter be continued to the next meeting so that there's an opportunity for council and the public to review that.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we have a few presentations. I'd like to call forward our Community Services Director, Michelle McNeil. Okay, our first presentation is for our Recreation Services Volunteer of the Year. Michelle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Welcome, everyone. It's nice to have a full house when we're going to recognize a couple of our Volunteers of the Year. So both the Community Services Commission and the Senior Citizens Commission voted on their 2010 Volunteers of the Year, and the Community Services Commission is awarding Arthur Mazmanian this evening. Is Arthur with us tonight? Oh, hello, Arthur. Mr. Mazmanian, as you may know, you were recommended for this award by our former Commissioner and present City Councilwoman, Ms. Karen Armbrust, and she recommended you because you have such distinguished presence in the city of West Covina. You are formerly or currently a coach for South Hills High School?
Assistant Coach.
Excellent, very good, and I know you spent thousands of hours volunteering in the community and also worked with American Little League. So would you like to say anything?
I'd like to say that God gave me the gift of teaching, and when I was in kindergarten, I fell in love with baseball, so it was only natural that I'd become a coach. And I want to say that what I really, really like to do is to give to the kids what my coaches gave to me when I was in high school and in college. I had a high school coach and a college coach at USC named Rod Dado. They gave me something that you can't buy with money, and all I would like to do is to give to other players the very same things that they gave to me. And really, somebody said it better than I could say it. Somebody said that 100 years ago, it wouldn't matter what kind of car I drove, it wouldn't matter how big a house I lived in, it wouldn't matter how much money I had in the bank or what kind of clothes I wore. But 50 years from now, maybe the world would be a little better because of the importance I might have had in the life of a child or a ballplayer, and that's really what motivates I want to thank the board and everyone else who had something to do with this. It's very meaningful and it means an awful lot to me. Thank you very much.
Hold on just a second. Those were very fitting, those were very fitting words that you just said there, and I know you don't know this, but I took a class at Mount SAC from you, gosh, 40 years ago, 30 years ago, I don't know what it was, but you were a great, I think it was first aid, yeah, you did, I think it was, but anyways, you have touched a lot of lives and we thank you for your service to the community and you're a great asset and tremendous coach, so thank you so much.
One more time. Oh, sure.
Our next presentation is for the Senior Citizen Commission. We have two honorees. Michelle.
We do. Thank you, Mr. Herrford. Our Senior Citizens Commission had a tie this year. We just couldn't decide between both of these individuals, so we'd like to honor this evening both Ruth Weir and Manuel Lucio. Ruth has been a SHOP volunteer since 1991. The SHOP is seniors helping our police, and I know on behalf of our Police Chief Frank Wills, he just sends all his appreciation for the over 1,000 hours of volunteerism that Ruth has provided for our police department. Thank you so much.
You're most welcome. This is a big surprise to me. And I almost couldn't talk, and now if you knew me, you'd know that's a real big deal when I passed off. But I used to think it was great to do these things with the kids and all, and I had all these brothers, so I learned to do them, and it was my pleasure to be here and help in any way I can. Now, my husband was a sculptmaster while he was alive, so that was a lot, and thank you all.
Ruth, thank you so much for your service to our community. You protected our neighborhoods. This is just a small token, a little certificate on behalf of the City Council to you for your service as 2010 Senior Services Volunteer of the Year. Thank you so much.
It doesn't look like Manuel was able to join us this evening. If I'm wrong, Manuel, please step forward. But Manuel works for St. Christopher School, and he has painted and, like Ruth, has donated thousands of hours to the school and to help a lot of the students that go to school here in West Covina, so we thank Manuel Lucio and we will get his certificate to him.
Thank you, Michelle. There you go. Okay, our next presentation is retirement for one of our commanders here in the city. I'd like to call our Police Chief Frank Wills forward. Hi Frank. Thank you so much, Mayor. Now, this is kind of a night of legends. Ruth Weir, kind of a legend, 19-year member of the SHOP unit, and Coach Mazmanian, everybody that grew up in this community knows of you, and some of us had dreams of playing baseball for you, and not everybody could. Another legendary figure is retiring tonight, and I'd like to recognize him, Commander Mark Taylor. Mark, would you come down? In fact, if you don't mind, could his wife Betty come down? Betty, do you mind coming down? I know you weren't prepared for this, and their oldest daughter, Gianna, is busy, but... And son, Adam, can Adam come down as well? Now, Adam, Adam goes to West Covina High School, he's on the baseball team, and before that was a perennial All-Star in West Covina Pony Baseball, and grew up in this community. That's one of the great things about Mark. Mark grew up locally and not just works here, but decided to raise his family here and send his children to the schools here, and he's absolutely committed to this city, and after retirement, he's going to remain in the city of West Covina because he loves it so much. He's one of those guys, when he graduated from the police academy, he was number one in academic standing, and then a quarter century later, in a very prestigious California Command College for Police Executives, he was valedictorian of that as well, and the guy is absolutely brilliant. He's recognized all over the San Gabriel Valley. He sees things before everybody else. He anticipates problems, budget problems, organizational problems, operations problems. The guy is just tremendously gifted. In fact, everything that's gone on, every positive thing in this organization that's occurred in the last 15 years, he's either been the architect behind it or had his hand in it. He's worked every assignment, he's got a portfolio, personnel file, full of commendations for bravery, for heroism, for service. You know, this is a guy that when he retires, he absolutely is not going to be replaced. Every police officer, whether they're 21 or 51, in the San Gabriel Valley knows about this guy. He is that well-known, he's that well-respected, and sometimes, you know, if I wasn't here, he would have made a tremendous police chief. He would make an excellent police chief. He really is. I mean, he's that gifted, and I hope you give him a nice round of applause when he's done making his comments because he deserves it, and not just the police department's going to miss him, but as residents, you're going to miss him too, whether you realize it or not. I think we have a plaque for him, Mayor? Mark, on behalf of the City Council, you know, you're more than just a commander to all of us, you're a good friend, and likewise with your family. Like the chief said, it's going to be difficult to replace you, but you're going to be in the community, and like I think I told you a couple of weeks ago, I don't think you're going to retire, I think you're going to find a job doing something somewhere, but you'll probably be protecting a Congresswoman or a Congressman or somebody like that, but you're going to be in public service for a long time. On behalf of the City Council, here's a resolution of commendation, if you'd like to take that. We also have a plaque here for your 26 years of service. Betty, you want to hold that? And last but not least is our city tile, if you'd like to hold that, so... And we'd like you to say a few words.
All right, well, thank you very much. First of all, I'd just like to thank the entire City Council, our City Manager, Mr. Mazman, and the entire city staff tonight. You've all been a pleasure to work with. I've enjoyed every minute of it, and I'm really going to miss you. I've had the opportunity and privilege to work with the finest men and women in law enforcement, and not only that, to serve just a wonderful community. And, you know, as residents, you're very fortunate to have the police department that you do. You can all feel really safe knowing that they're here to protect you. So I wouldn't be here without all of you, all your support, and I just want to thank everybody, and especially my wife Betty, my son Adam. My daughter Bianca's taking SAT practice exams tonight, so she couldn't be here, but that's the important thing, the more scholarships, the better for her, so that's an important thing, so... Again, thank you very much, and I appreciate the opportunity to serve.
Okay, folks, we have a few public hearings tonight, so we have a pretty heavy agenda. We're going to move some of the hearings up that have more speakers, just so you're aware of what the agenda's going to look like tonight. We also will start with oral communications, which is the time when residents can speak on anything they wish within the purview of the City Council, and we allot five minutes for each one of those speakers. Our first speaker is Frederick Sykes.
How do I know if this is on?
Light screen.
This one here?
That I don't know. I think it's down also.
Mayor Protam Toohey, councilmembers Lane, Sanderson, and Armbrust, staff, and good evening to members of the audience. First of all, tonight, I would like to start with saying thank you to the mayor for having the staff check on the, what we call the missile, the cellphone tower that is in need of being refurbished. And to the City Manager, we would like to say thank you for taking care of the tree. That was a problem for pedestrians, it was pretty precarious there. It's been removed, so thank you. And in your hand, you have a document that speaks to the cellphone tower situation. It talks about new technology, and again, I ask that we have a moratorium, and if we can't do that, at least have the staff do a study on this new technology whereby they're trying to eliminate those hideous cell towers that are starting to deface our city. Right now, we have 30 cellphone towers, and we're, we have another application set for our fire station number five that's on the agenda for the Planning Commission, the next meeting. So we have an ongoing proliferation, and hopefully you will consider this new technology, and maybe we can cease and desist from defacing our community and decreasing the value of the property in the areas that are near the cellphone towers. Moving on to the initials on the hillside, again, I think it's a wonderful idea regarding pride of the city, but I still would like to reiterate that this is an awful time to expend even minute dollars on things that deter from solving our problems with our budget and our diminished services situation. So when you say that you're going to put the initials on the hill and the item is on the agenda, there's a conflict there, because you're saying you're going to do this project of the initials without spending taxpayer dollars. The moment it's on the agenda, you have spent tax dollars, and of course, along with that comes the staff that has to do research and engineering, and then there's no statement about who's going to maintain these initials once they're going to be placed on the side of a hill. And then the big question is, how is that going to help the city with the initials on the side of the hills? How is that going to help the city solve these tremendous problems that we're dealing with, starting with the budget deficit at over $3 million? And finally, with the, with this repair item that was removed tonight, I hope that the powers that be can just reflect back to when you were young. Some of us had friends that worked on cars, and these are also tough times for people. So a lot of people are doing their own home repairs, so as you prepare for this next meeting and this initiative is, this new law is coming up, please consider that. We are in tough times, and a lot of people save money by doing minor repairs at home, so be considerate of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ex-Speaker Lloyd Johnson. Just as Lloyd's coming up, I think item number 10 was the one that we continued, is that correct? Will we, City Attorney, will we take public testimony on that tonight since we continued it?
Any testimony will not be part of the record for that item.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Two items I'd like to talk about. One is Mayor Steve Herrford's placement of the city initials on the West Covina hillside. What a great idea, you know, I'm all for it. I'm one of your volunteers right at the very beginning, I told you that right there. I would even help maintain if that had to be done. I'm just saying, we know now in the city's dollars will be spent to put it up or to maintain it. I think we have enough volunteers that'll do that, so I think that's a great idea. The other item is, I want to thank Councilwoman Armbrust for bringing up the requests for seeking the City Council's census to instruct the city staff to apply for Proposition 84 funding for a dog park in West Covina. What a great idea. I brought this idea up to the council almost two years ago. Matter of fact, at that time, the mayor, Herrford, and I, we walked up on a piece of property behind Petsmart, which would be a perfect place for a dog park. It's already fenced in right there, and I think it'd do a lot of good business for Petsmart and the stores around it, too. So I think it's a great idea, I hope we can move forward with the funding on it, and maybe we get something done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Today, I'm going to just address one simple thing. About two council meetings ago, a gentleman was speaking about the live broadcast to the public and how it's on the internet, and I heard Mayor Steve Herrford mention that we are on the internet. Well, I had my laptop with me and my mobile internet, and I checked that for myself, and it appeared we weren't online, but maybe it's my operating system from my computer. I don't know, but I'd like that to please be checked out because sometimes I can't make it here and I like to see what's going on in City Council. So thank you, and I yield the rest of my time to the chair.
Thank you. Yeah, we will, Lawrence, we'll get back to you on that. It should be working fine, but just in case, we'll check on that.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Iso Nakasato. I am a field representative for Assembly Member Roger Hernandez, and I'm here to introduce myself to everyone here in the City Council. Karen Armbrust, we've met before. Michael Toohey, always very nice to see you. Steve Herrford, Mayor, thank you so much for letting me be here. Sheri Lane, and Ms. Sanderson. I've lived in West Covina all my life. I went to Nogales High School, I went to Gianno. I live on the south side of West Covina, and I am proud to be a field representative for Assembly Member Roger Hernandez. I work, I'm here at your service, and everyone here, I'm here at your service. If you have any concerns in regards to the city, any issues that you need the Assembly Members' Office to proceed in anything and do any research for you, definitely let me know, I will be here. Our office is right here at the Branca Tower. We're in West Covina, and our office is here to serve you, and that's most important. People don't realize what the Assembly Members' Office is here to do. We are here to help you and aid you and your families to get things done and to hear your voice. So feel free to come up to me, to come to our office, it's right at the Branca Tower. We are here at your service, and also, I'm here to work very closely with all of you in hopes that we can make West Covina more and more beautiful every day. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Herrford, Councilman Armbrust, Toohey, Sheri Lane, oh, you got both names, boy, Sanderson. First of all, I love animals. I'm a dog lover, I mean, I'm probably the only person here that's got a phone full of dogs, but they're so cute, you can't help it, they gotta be on the phone. But I do have concerns about the dog park. One concern was when I was reading the paper just this last month, a couple were charged with their dog barking. Now, if we put a dog park and there was any residential areas near there, can the city be sued for those dogs barking? Because you get two dogs together and they're going to start barking. That's only natural. The other concern I have is, again, just happened recently, my mom and my brother took their dogs to the dog park in San Dimas. When they came back, those dogs were covered head to toe in fleas. So lucky me, my visit to my mom was washing two dogs. Loved it. Of course, I smelled as bad as they did when they started, but luckily, we got the fleas off them. So anytime we have a dog park, we're going to have to have it maintained and sprayed, which can also cause problems because some of those sprays are, can be dangerous to humans. So there's, you know, and then the third problem is, you know, some owners do walk around with bags. Unfortunately, even though there's bags at Shadow Oak Park, for instance, people don't use them, they just let the, you know, leave the grass, leave it in the grass for someone else to pick up. So there's various problems, I mean, I mean, I love watching dogs having fun, but there are concerns that need to be addressed, and I'm not trying to be a Debbie Downer on that one. The other concern, problem, not, not, this problem, it's an item that needs to be addressed, and I've brought it up here before, is trash. Okay? I know we've talked about the trash on the 10 freeway, well, that's not the only place there's trash in West Covina. When I walk out, when I'm walking with my dog, I'm, and on Saturdays especially with my girlfriend, we're picking trash up. I literally pick up in two days, seven bags of trash. I wish we could put something in the Discover West Covina magazine. We got that thing in there, put it in there, say, you know what, show a little pride in your city. If you've got trash in front of your house, pick it up. I mean, golly geez, you know, it's amazing how many people don't, I guess, they get in their car and throw it on the ground, whatever. It's not the way, if you care about your property, if you care about your home, why don't you show it? And I wish we could at least address that a little bit more and put a little more oomph into it, and, I mean, that's what trash cans are for, but it's amazing how many people can't make it to it, so, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Alfred Williams, of West Covina, live in the south part of the city. Good evening, Mayor Herrford, Ms. Armbrust, Armbrust, Mr. Toohey, Ms. Lane, Ms. Sanderson. Tonight, I'd like to thank the, at least Chris, and I was City Clerk too, for giving me a call and giving me some information that I asked, but tonight, I have some other information I want to ask, and I hope I get the same quick response from you. I know you're going to talk tonight about Maverick and Ridge Rider, and in the past, since 2006, there's always been funds loaned from one park area to another park area, and as far as I can remember, the majority of it was loaned to Ridge Rider and Maverick. But there was never anything that showed when this money was being returned. To this day, I don't know if any of these funds that were loaned from one park to another park has ever been returned, and I thank our city financial manager. I'd like to see something that says when it's going to be returned, if it hasn't been returned, and, you know, when, if, give me a date on, because I think right now, it's like when my son comes and says, Dad, loan me $10. Well, I know darn well this isn't a loan, because I'm not getting it back, and right now, that looks like what has happened with these parks, because I haven't seen anything in the last four years, five years, that says we returned the money that we loaned to put fences and other things in other parks, and we have other parks out there that need something done in them also. As also, they say there's no master plan. We've been spending quite a bit of money in those two parks without a master plan. I thought there was a master plan for that park, but I guess I was wrong there. If there was, I'd like to apologize for thinking there was one and there isn't one. And the other thing is, yes, like the gentleman said, I think we need to still do something about internet access, not just sound, but visual. I think the people would like to see your lovely faces and get it back on the cable, because everybody, that covers the most group of people. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, Bruce Lineback, West Covina, welcome council. First of all, I want to talk about the West Covina Football Team. They had a championship team this year, and we had the... They had a championship team this year and we had the courtesy of our city council. The game was televised between West Covina and Benita. And I got four tapes here, $10 each. So far, I've sold 74. It was a great game, so anybody who wants to buy a tape, call me up. It's $10, or call me up or tell me. This $10 for the tape was a great game. Also, we had seven citizens, Bob Bradstreet, Forrest Tennant, Forrest Wilkins, Audrey Lindberg, John Van Ness, and our city manager, Andy Pasment, and somebody named Roger Hernandez. They all donated $10 each and with that, $70. We bought five tapes for each one of the, for the fire stations and two for the, for the policemen. So we're always grateful for the, what the support we get from the police and the fire. So I really want to say it was a great game and it was great that it was televised on Charter. Everybody liked it. And just think, maybe we can get tell, get all our meetings televised so we can see y'all in person, living color. Uh, and I'm just thinking, what this one gentleman was saying about the having a problem, I've heard other people said they've had problems with the, uh, listening to the, uh, meetings on the TV or whether they can see it or listen. I'll just tell you this, I just remember I was growing up back in the 50s and we got a TV set. And you know what we did at home? We turned off our radio. I'm just thinking, when the Super Bowl came up, how many people at home were watching the game on TV or they showed, I don't want to watch it on TV, I want to listen to it on the radio? So what do you think? What do you think the people want? I really think we should eventually get cable TV to connect the people with our city council. Also, another thing is this, I'm, uh, as you know, you can tell, I'm one of these growing group of people, they call them senior citizens. And I just want to say one thing. A lot of times I come to meetings, as the person speaks into the speaker, I cannot understand what the person's saying. And a lot of times I'll ask somebody next to me and they can't either. I remember distinctly, I was sitting down in the front row and somebody's up there speaking and Forrest Wilkins, I was talking to him and he says, I can't understand anything what she's saying. So I don't know, sometimes, uh, I don't think the acoustics are ideal in here. Maybe you want to change it or look at it or whatever, but for people who are hard of hearing, I'm deaf in one ear, hard of hearing the other, I can't always hear what's going on when a speaker gets up and speak. You can hear it when they go toward you, but a lot of, I think, people can't understand what people are saying. Thank you very much. Go West Covina Bulldogs. Thanks for televising the meeting. And I got four tapes right here. West Covina had a great team. Appreciate the support from the city council. Thank you.
Thank you. I think you have a tough crowd tonight. They're all South Hills. Councilmember Tuie?
I just wanted to tell Bruce that Bruce-
Your mic's not on.
If Bruce is having problems hearing, I mean, we also have special headsets also designed for that in our system here that can work for anybody. We have special audio systems available, similar to what movie theaters have, so you can hear that way also to make it a little bit more clear. This, we don't have 200 of them, but we have some for the public.
Okay, that concludes our oral communications. Move to the consent calendar. Is there any items to be pulled? Hearing none. Do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
Moved by Sanderson, second by Lane. All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion, any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Okay, we'll move on to public hearings now. I'm going to move up hearing number 11. That has the most speaker cards, so we'll move that one up and then we'll take hearing number eight.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Due to a conflict, I have to excuse myself. I do live within 500 feet of the park and I cannot participate, so I will be leaving it up to you.
Okay, Councilwoman Sanderson will be leaving the room, so we'll wait until she does that. Okay, the matter set for public hearing consists of the adoption of a master plan for Maverick Ridge Riders Park. City Clerk, will you verify the proper legal notice has been given?
Yes, that's verified.
At this time, I shall open the public hearing for the adoption of a master plan for Maverick Ridge Riders Park. I shall first be the presentation of the staff report. Then we shall hear from those in favor of the proposal and then those opposed. Mr. Pasment, who will present the staff report?
Mr. Anderson will do that report. Thank you. The matter before you tonight is the establishment of a park master plan for the Maverick Ridge Riders Park. While the site has been used for several decades for recreational purposes, it wasn't purchased by the city for parkland until 2001. It is the only park in the city that has not currently had an adopted park master plan. The purpose of the park master plan is to provide a vision for the park and guide future improvements. The master, this master plan is a working list of action items developed by city staff, the park design consultant, David Volz Design, and community input received at a community meeting in May of 2007. We do have a representative from David Volz Design tonight, Mr. Gary Vasquez. The park is located to the east of Citrus Street and south of Walnut Creek Wash. The park is divided into two well-defined uses, a baseball field and an equestrian center. If I can have slide two, please. The park master plan maintains the two defined uses. And I'll just point that out. The baseball field is here on the western side of the property and the equestrian center is on the east side of the property. The plan recommends improvements including drainage, lighting, seating opportunities, creation of trails, improved parking, maintaining the rustic character, and preserving the mature trees. The plan includes a list of improvements to implement the vision crafted for the park. These improvements may be completed as funding becomes available through capital improvements, budgeting, or grants such as state or open space grants. A joint meeting of the Planning Commission and Community Services Commission was held at Janu, on January 25, 2011. The commissions received input from the public. Based on that input, there appeared to be a misunderstanding of the park master plan and a concern that the improvements in the plan were proposed to be funded and completed immediately. The commissioners responded that the park master plan guides future improvements at such time as funding is available. After the discussion, both commissions voted unanimously to recommend approval to the city council of the Maverick Ridge Riders Park master plan. Go ahead and go to the next slide. Because there were some issues raised at the joint meeting, staff has chosen to provide some information based on, or information on park spending in the city, although it's not really directly related to the park master plan before you tonight. So we have a series of four slides that show what's called park dedication fee districts. There's also a colored map over here that, that show the, those districts. And we have done a calculation over the last 10 years of the amount of monies expended in each one of those districts. So the first slide shows area, uh, park dedication fee districts A through C and A shows a expenditure of $383,600, B a expenditure of $373,000, and C $1,606,000. Next slide. Slide, this slide shows information on park dedication fee districts D and E. D has expenditures of $4,611,300 and E has expenditures of $654,080. This slide shows information on park dedication fee districts F and G. F has expenditures of $3,104,160 and G has expenditures of $1,957,000. And lastly, this slide shows park dedication fee district H and also the location of Paseos in PDF districts F and G. H has expenditures of $52,000. This concludes staff's presentation. Be happy to answer any questions at this, this time.
Okay, so city council, any questions? Jeff, just explain why we do a master plan to everybody, okay?
The master plan is done to sort of set a vision and create a blueprint for how we want the park, how the city wants the park to be developed over time. And we have park master plans that have been in place for 15, 20 years that are still in the process of being developed. So it's not something that happens overnight, something that will usually take many years to, to come to fruition.
And so that the public knows, uh, we have master plans that we, we've approved that we haven't spent a dime on. We have soccer fields over at Orangewood Park that have been master planned and there's no funding for it. So what's out there now is probably considering our budget situation, probably going to remain intact, but the master plan kind of gives us some guidance for the future. Okay, at this time, I'd like to ask if there's any written correspondence?
We received one letter from Jan Rainey on Vanderhoof, who spoke in support of the master plan.
Okay, thank you. I will first have the speakers in favor come forward and then the, those in opposition. First speaker is Robert Walker.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the council. Mr. Mayor. I live adjacent to the park in question. I attended the commission meeting. I was more than impressed with the presentation that staff made regarding the long-range master plan for the Maverick Ridge Riders. I wish to reiterate what I heard several commission members state as they voted for this proposal, that it is essentially important for a master plan to be put in place. This makes this particular project eligible for potential grant money, money that could be raised outside of the city. But they also emphasized that certainly, given the wish list, that there are other agenda items and other park items that, from year to year, will take precedence over this. Being well acquainted with Ridge Riders and Maverick, first of all, knowing full well how important this facility is, I can't help but notice that we have the baseball team here from South Hills. And given that I have watched many of their games, triumphant games, I might add, I've never seen them lose at Maverick Field yet. I think this is more than an important facility that needs to be maintained and needs to be supported. Ridge Riders is a gem of the city. It's the only facility of its kind and I commend the city for having the foresight and the positive approach to add this to our city park system. But the other voice I heard at the commission meeting was a voice that objected to any thought of a long-range plan or inclusion of expenditure regarding this park. Why? Well, simply because other areas of the city did not have the acreage and the amount of land devoted to park use. Now, I sympathize with that speaker. He had a point. I've been in this city a long time, since 1950. I'm that old. And I can remember when I was 10 years old, when what we called at the time Cortez Park was added to the city park structure. Little League is an old page of business in our community, but it was brand new then. I was 10 years old when Little League started across the street from Citrus, I think we call it Citrus Park now, and, and when it started at that park. My point is this. Most of the decisions regarding acreage for parks and, and how much we have land devoted to that purpose were made in the 1950s and in the 1960s by city councils at that time. We may deplore the choices they made, but to land-based the planning commission and this council for decisions that were made decades ago, I think misses the point. I am a resident, not of a particular area of West Covina, but of West Covina. And when an improvement is made, be it at Shadow Oak or Cortez or Citrus Park or Ridge Riders, that's a decision that's good for me because an improvement in one park is good for everybody in this town. I believe that if there is a greater need in other parks of the city and if this master plan is adapted, and I recommend that it should be, that you consider the needs of the other parks. Ridge Riders and Maverick are in pretty good shape and if there's a greater, greater need elsewhere, then spend the money there. That benefits me as it benefits every other resident in West Covina. I think we need to pull together as a community, be proud of the park system we have, and I commend the council for doing a great job. I do recommend once again that you approve the measure put before you by the planning commission. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, South Hills, for using the park and using it well. Continue to win. Thank you very much.
Okay, one thing we do ask is that we, we hold the applause. Jim Schneider?
Good evening. What can you say? I've been in a, in the city for about 40 years. I grew up at, at Cortez Park. I watched it come into what it is now, a beautiful park, a park that, it's a family park. Seen it from the dirt bike, dirt bikes on the hills to now moving the fire station to putting in a senior center. I've seen Maverick Park, Ridge Riders, to where it was a dump. It was built up, it got wasted away, and then we had some gentlemen come in and take over the park and has really made it a beautiful place for, for many ballplayers to play as well as the high school. It still needs improvements in there. There's still a lot of room for growth on that, on that area, the park as well as the Ridge Riders area. The master plan needs to be voted in, as it has with Cortez Park, to make it another jewel of the city. Being a coach for many years through West Covina, Cortez Park, as well as the Dukes program, it's nice to see how Cortez Park has become the jewel of the San Gabriel Valley. It's nice to see my kid travel around when he was playing at Cortez Park, going to other cities and being the envy of that, of them. And now being at the Dukes program, my child gets to travel around like he does this past weekend and go to Granada Hills and see what kind of a dump they have over there at the sports complex. And now we have a chance, an opportunity to make Ridge Riders, the Maverick Park, a jewel of the area, not only for the South Hills, but for the other programs that we have there, the Arsenal program as well as the Dukes program. Many scouts, many people outside the, the city as well as the state comes to just see the ballplayers play. And improvements that have been done privately have been astounding and has been great for the players there. And now we have a chance to have the city actually fund some of those programs, have a better parking area, have more area for the Ridge Riders to have their parking as well. And now I'm seeing areas of improvement for the ballplayers to play there. Everybody wants to see the park, parks around the area grow and become beautiful and this is an opportunity for the city to actually do this for the, for the ballplayers as they grow through the programs. Thank you.
Thank you. Marissa Patton, you didn't say whether you're in favor or in opposition. Is Marissa here? Oh, please come forward.
Hello, my name is Marissa Patton and I'm 15 years old. I spent the last seven years of my life living at 1133 Teresa Street in West Covina. It's north of the 10 freeway and west of Vincent Avenue. At the age of eight, I started riding horses at Ridge Riders and I eventually started taking lessons through a program which is awkward at Ridge Riders. I have spent most of my summers growing up at Ridge Riders as I attended horse camps and I would ride horses every chance that I could. As I grew as a rider, I started to compete in horse shows that were hosted at the Ridge Riders facility. To my knowledge, this is the only public equestrian facility in the San Gabriel Valley that allows for the community to enjoy the beauty of horses. Horses have kept me focused on my passion and they have taught me the responsibilities that have come with the caring for animals. I've enjoyed growing up and playing at Palm View Park and Del Norte Parks, but Ridge Riders is truly something special. I appreciate the city council for keeping such a great facility within the city which allows me and many others to enjoy our love for horses. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Brown?
Good evening. I'm here to speak on behalf of adoption of the plan. Fortunately, the last two speakers kind of framed- Fortunately, the last two speakers kind of framed the issues for me, but I would like to elaborate beyond the fact that it's a great baseball facility where I played, and beyond the fact that it's a great equestrian facility. I live right adjacent to the park, and I can attest the fact that I don't have horses, and I no longer play baseball. My kids are long gone, but the park is used by a tremendous part of the community. I see people walking down that trail, at least 100 a day, walking dogs, or doing whatever just to get recreation. The other point is that the equestrian facility, even though some of the speakers at the planning commission painted it as an elitist activity, and like I said, I don't have horses, but my kids always enjoyed going over there and having picnics, and the facility is clearly developed now, but I think it's useful for such activities. And I often see on Sundays, now that the Ridge Riders programs are not there, I see plenty of people over there using it as a park. And I think it should, as an adjoining property owner, I'm glad to see that it's finally reached this stage where there's a plan in place. When we bought in that area in 1986, there was no such guarantee, and a lot of you probably don't know, that a lot of developers over the years have made a run at that park. And it was because the city had the foresight to tie it up with a lease first, and then purchase it, that it's still here. So I'm glad to see that we're finally nailing it down.
Thank you. Erica Aguirre.
Good evening. Again, my name is Erica Aguirre. I'm a resident of West Covina. I've been here, excuse me, lived here for 20 years. My children have enjoyed the parks that we have in the city, and have attended Gianno Intermediate, currently high school, in Nogales. Also, I have one who participates with the Dukes program and the Arsenal's program, and therefore I'm here giving my support in favor of the Maverick Park Plan. It is a very nice field. Yes, definitely, I agree with the rest of the speakers that more can be done to it, improvement, but yet I've heard so many, just being in the baseball, have traveled to different parks, different places. I mean, I've received comments from people that we know that it is a very good-looking and good field where you go and compare it to others, and it's just good to have that here in our city to keep our kids off the streets, and, you know, for them to do something good. They have these skills to develop the skills and move forward with that, and hopefully can become or do something good with it. So again, I'm in favor, and thank you.
Thank you. Brandon Hayward. Hayward.
Good evening, council. I didn't know I was going to speak, but obviously I'm with the Dukes program. I'm also with West Covina American Little League, across the street at Cortez Park. Been through tremendous, seen a lot of facilities, high school, and the facility at Maverick is second to none because of all the hard work that the staff puts in there. The one thing I also like to say is that Maverick Park, you know, the Field of Dreams, you know, is maybe considered, it is a jewel, but as far as the community, the Maverick facility is second to none. And you could attest by the Corey Lidle Tournament shirts, you know, there's a lot of that we give back to the community. It's not only just for, you know, just so we can play games on Sundays or Saturdays. A lot of people come to our field, our facility, to participate, because, you know, like you've heard before, it is the best. But, you know, we do, as I know as a community and staff, that we do give back, not only to our citizens, but also to other foundations and stuff like that. So that's all I have to say, obviously, in favor, and thank you.
Thank you. Kevin Smith.
Evening, council. Obviously, I'm in favor of our lower levels play at Maverick, but I want to go a little deeper than that. As a kid growing up, 35 years ago, I got to participate. I didn't live in the community. I lived in Walden Park, and we had the opportunity to play at Maverick. And I just think it's so important for our youth of today to have someplace to go and feel positive about what they're doing. You know, if you change one or two kids' lives as they go through because of the game of baseball, I'm an example of that, you're saving kids, and I think that's what we're here. And, you know, there's pros and cons to just about everything, especially how tight money is, and so on and so forth, but I think this project would just be just an investment to our youth, and we can't, you never can go wrong doing that. And that's why I've spent my life, over 30 years coaching, you know, investing in our youth, and there's nothing better to have some kids come back and say, "Coach, thanks," or, you know, the facilities that you have is second to none. And, you know, to upgrade what you have now would just, would be, I just think, a great thing. And again, just the investment that you would, you know, to our youth is second to none. And again, I appreciate, you know, looking at it, and hopefully that will come about, and you can continue for years and really enjoy the place. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Viera.
Good evening. Good evening. Obviously, I'm here in favor of approval of the master plan. Being myself also during high school time, played on Maverick Field when it wasn't so nice, chasing some horses off of there. So to see it come to where it is now, has, it's just amazing to see that transformation. And fortunately, for me being a part of it, when I was coaching with the Dukes and then started my own program with the Arsenal, to where it is now, it's been astounding. So, and for me personally, as the first gentleman stated, it's not just about that park, but I think this, for me personally, for me being able to move back into the city a couple years ago, is to see all the parks in the city of West Covina be recognized. I have a six and eight-year-old, plays at Del Norte, my daughter plays at Cameron Park, Shadow Oak Park. And for me to see the approval go through would mean my kids will also benefit from that, not just today, the players here, but eventually, as they get older, their children. And I think we need to lose, I mean, we need to get sight of that. And as they alluded to earlier, and someone will get in a little more depth, just the attention that that field has brought to the city, from people coming in from out of state, from out of the area, to come into the area, to enjoy the park, you know, from a baseball stadium, and to spend money in the city, which I think has been very beneficial. It has become a hub for baseball, not just within the San Gabriel Valley, but in Southern California. It is well-known now what that facility and that park has become, and the city of West Covina. It's developed a great reputation of, "I want to come to West Covina." And it's been exciting seeing it get that way. So obviously, I am very much in favor of approval of the master plan, and thank you.
Thank you. Larry France.
Gets a little obvious, I'm in favor of it. I just want to say, you know, I did not grow up in West Covina, I grew up in Duarte. Actually, brought my son here to play with his cousin as he was three and four years old, traveling to and from. Got to a point where we actually gave up our house to move to West Covina, so our kids could have a better education, live in a better city, a bigger city, and have a chance to be challenged athletically-wise. Being part of West Covina these last few years, and being part of the Dukes and the Walmarado, Cortez, now part of the Arsenal, my son's had a chance to experience unbelievable things. And I owe a lot of gratitude and thanks to the people who've put time in, who devote their time. You know, my wife runs a snack bar. You know, we don't get paid for it, you know, it's just something we do, it's part of giving back. But our kids have had a chance to go all around the country to play baseball, you know, Florida, Ohio. They won the Mickey Mantle World Series this summer, you know, in Texas. You know, it's just things that I never got a chance to do, but I got it, I made a point to make sure my kid had a chance to do and experience these things. Because of people like Mike Viera, Cam Saylor, guys in charge of this at Maverick Park, this development, you know, a lot of our kids have gotten college opportunities now. You know, a lot of our kids have already gotten full scholarship rides as sophomores and juniors. That's just something you can't replace. I know, I don't have an extra $100,000 bucks laying around, and I'm sure a lot of people don't these times either. So I think we really should take this serious, and we've got professional scouts, we've got college scouts who come to watch these games over at Maverick Park now, and it's an unbelievable opportunity for these kids. So, you know, it's really a no-brainer. Thank you.
Thank you. Melanie Hayward.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for having me. I didn't know I was going to have to speak tonight, but I am very honored to be a part of West Covina. I just moved here, and from Lindora, everything you've done for Corey with his names being up on the Cortez Park, knowing now that my son will play there, it's very honored, we're very honored to be here. And anything that myself, Christopher, my sister's a huge, she runs the Corey Lidle Foundation, and knowing that we can help out in any way, we would very appreciate, we're very appreciative to be playing there. I'm so nervous.
It's okay.
I just don't like to speak publicly. But again, thank you, and I'm very, I'm for the field being taken care of, and again, anything we can do to help, we'd be honored. Thank you.
Thank you. Cameron Saylor.
Good evening, council, Mr. Mayor, council members. I have a little bit of a unique perspective over what a lot of folks here are talking tonight, is I was on the original board that worked with the city to redevelop Maverick Park. That was the Maverick Development Group. We came together as private citizens and the city to redevelop that complex, and it was a horse pasture. And I have, I have a photo journal of from when we started to forward, and one day I'm going to put that all together to show the history of Maverick Park. It's come a long way, and the city originally put a lot of money into the facility, about $330,000, and the outside bids were about $1.4 million. We developed that park as, really of our labor, borrowing materials from friends and contractors, and really developing that entire park to start with. Another $125,000 were put into that park. Two years later, to put in the lights, and we went through a lot of meetings like this to have that done. Since that time, the city has put little money into that facility, and rightfully so. We got a jumpstart on it, and the Dukes program and the Arsenal program have really adopted that facility. And we've adopted it to make it the marquee program, not only in the city, but in the country. And why? Was because they developed these guys right here. Had the opportunity, privilege of coaching about 80% of these guys. These are all former Dukes and Arsenal kids sitting here, most of them, a lot of West Covina kids. Today, the Dukes and Arsenal kids, today they're in the program, are in a situation, and it is really because the stage was set by the city to be able to build this facility and develop baseball on really this part of the city where it didn't have a 13, 18-year-old program back in '91 when we started. That was the original intention. We did it, we've developed it, and we've really now built a program that doesn't just support the Dukes, Arsenal, or the South Hills programs, it really has far-reaching objectives that go on, and they really reach out into our community deeper than anybody recognizes, and even more than I recognized, until today I started putting together some information to really talk about a year and review, and really some things that went on. This last year, we had a winter workout, which is open to all West Covina residents. We had 133 kids that came out for our winter workouts. Those winter workouts cost those kids $25 for four workouts, and it was baseball clinics. Average clinic in the area runs $250 for an equivalent. We did it for $25. Past years, we did it for free. This year, we charged $25 and gave a $10 shirt. Those $15 of proceeds went back to volunteer coaches that give up their time that are in college to coach these kids in the program. They don't have jobs, they scrap and scrape, and those additional proceeds went back to help them help us in the program, and that was what we did this last year. 133 kids. South Hills High School will practice 100 times out there this year, 15 games. The Bombers, another program that rents the facility, will do 150 practices in 50-plus games. The Arsenal will have 45 practices in 90 games. The Dukes will have 700 practices and over 160 games out there. We host the Corey Lidle Tournament, we work closely with the Corey Lidle Foundation, the Corey Lidle Foundation, their foundation of preference is the Make-A-Wish Foundation, that was Corey's wish. We, the Dukes, through the efforts of the Dukes program and our volunteer, have donated $13,000 to Make-A-Wish Foundation through the Corey Lidle, and they've donated $130,000. So we've donated 10% of those dollars back, and that's again through the community. Our 14-year-old, the Dukes program this last year won the West Regional, we had eight teams that came in, we went on to Arizona, we lost the championship out there for the WABC World Series. But our 16-year-old Mantle program and the Arsenal program won. And again, we had 16 teams out here for the West Regional, and those were teams, again, staying in our hotels in our city and developing that ancillary income and that tax base that we all look for as a whole. We hosted Under Armour Showcase, a baseball showcase, a scout ball showcase tournament. We were fortunate enough to put in a new booth this year with a, we had a donor that helped us with a new sound system, which was very nice, thank you very much. We also had another donor, the Kaluchi Foundation, this year that helped us with some stuff as well, and we appreciate those donations. It has gone a long way in helping us continue to redevelop that field. Some of our efforts over this last year, and I was astounded by these numbers, we worked with several hotels, we worked with rates for people coming in, West Covina hotels, 1,700 nights were stayed in West Covina hotels as a direct result of what takes place at Maverick Park. My estimate's about $150,000 in hotels spent, tax base of about $25,000 off the hotels. Meals, about $85,000 from those same hotel stays.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, Speaker Seater, there are five minutes.
Am I going past? I'm sorry. Can I have another minute? Can I get some more? Okay, I'd like to just, this is some good stuff that goes on out there as a whole. We'll have about 75,000 visitors this year in that park. You don't realize it, because it's coming and going. If each of those guys spent $10 a year, $750,000, multiply that by two, who's going to only spend $10,000 a year in our city? There's the gas station, the stores, the liquor stores around, it just multiplies up. The impact is, on a conservative estimate, based on what goes on in that facility and what we do, a little over a million and a half dollars, we believe, is being spent in this city that we wouldn't otherwise have, that would be going to other places, and that's a direct relation to that little dirt patch behind the apartment complex. So, we maintain the facility, we spend over $30,000 a year in maintaining that, the other user groups that use that facility are a plus on the budget side for the city. We also donate excess funds to children's services programs, back to the city, when we have excess funds at the end of our season every year, back to the city. Everybody in our program is a nonprofit, it's a nonprofit situation, nobody gets paid. The coaches do it because we do it for the kids in the program and development of baseball. Mike Viera, who spoke earlier, interestingly enough, he works harder for these kids to move on, anybody you'll ever see. 100 colleges last year, I can give you all a copy of the list, were out there. Every major league team was out there this last year, staying in our hotels in our city, watching our kids play. The numbers that roll up, our 2011 class of seniors, $1.6 million in scholarships have already been awarded to those young men on a four-year equivalent. The 2012 class, our juniors, $1.4 million. Over the 20-year history of the Dukes, $8.8 million. Dukes Arsenal combined, over $20 million have come out of baseball scholarships that have come from what's going on at that facility the last 20 years. So, as a whole, obviously, I'm in support of what we do out there. I thank the city for the continued years of support, and as a resident of the city for 20 years, no place I'd rather be. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes the speakers in favor. We have one speaker in opposition, Dana Sykes.
Actually, I'm arc-neutral.
Actually, I'm mark neutral. 'Cause my question is, four years ago, they had the meeting, the meeting for the residents. Wasn't that when they did the master plan? That's the only question I'm concerned, I'm confused about. Because we had the meeting, we discussed what to do with master plan, the master plan for Ridge Riders four years ago. As far as I'm concerned, any... the parks are always a blessing. I mean, many cities don't have any parks. One gentleman talked about the fact that his daughter played softball. Shadow Oak had a softball tournament there, I'm not sure if it was this past summer or the summer before. I have no problem with that. I love watching kids play. I think it's great that they're out there using it. The only problem is there was no parking, and I was directing people, well, go over that street over here, and over there. If they could park on that one gravel area whenever they do have tournaments, that would probably be helpful to the parents that do come to the kids, and that's all I wanted to say.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we do allow rebuttal, but I think since I was a neutral, we won't have a rebuttal. Now's the time for council member comments. Councilmember Tuey?
Obviously, I've been involved in a lot of the different youth sports and worked with Cameron over the years when Cameron was working there, and when I first got on the council with councilmember Hereford, our philosophy has always been that it's better to build children than repair adults. We spend a fortune incarcerating adults, and we get beat up for spending a nickel trying to help our youth get to the next level, and that's very unfortunate that we go through battles normally to do something positive. I clearly am for the master plan being done there, so people understand. We bought the facility when, for many years, the Ridge Riders got a group of volunteers together and did the facility many years ago, forty-plus years ago. Maverick was open, then it was closed down, and a similar group came back to us in the early nineties, Maverick Development Group, to again, get in there. We gave them very little seed money, and you know, if you understand the difference what Cameron Saylor just said, the bid was one-point-four million, and we did it for a million-plus less by using the parents volunteer, which no one takes that ever into account or the benefit. We just did Shadow Oak Park. We spent one-point-five million over there with no volunteers, and we spent one-point-five million. How much more your money can go when the people get involved and interested in... it doesn't make a difference whether it's Maverick Field. You can take the same synopsis over at Wal Morado Park and West Covina Youth Pony Baseball. You can take it. We have the president here over at Palm View Park, and I know John Lee also was a president at Pacific Coast Little League, but the amount of time they put in maintaining our fields and our parks and keeping them safe by all the activities, how many hours the men and women volunteering at those different parks, we could never replace this in the time. Our parks look as good as they do partly because of the people out in the audience, not the city. Our facilities are, for the most part, maintained inside the fields by the parents, and they do a great job, and I think the credit, even though we get credit when you go other places, really the credit is bestowed on the parents at Maverick, at that particular facility, for what you do, and no different Steve Bennett for Pacific Coast Little League, whether it's West Covina National Little League, like I said, West Covina Youth Pony Baseball, they put in their own lights. West Covina Youth Pony Baseball on the Bronco Field in the mid-nineties. I mean, it's amazing what, when you get a group of parents that care together about something can do when they use their expertise, 'cause every one of our leagues has someone who's a bricklayer, everyone has a guy who can do cement, you know, you name it, someone has a tractor, and that's how these facilities and leagues have always operated. And I remember, and the late Bill Haker, I remember Bill driving on his little tractor, doing many stuff. It's amazing. I think it's great, like I said. Someone else raised also the question of the amount of money spent at some of these facilities. Some of these facilities are unique, and that's why I think Mr. Williams raised that point. We only have one senior center in West Covina, so all the parks have to contribute some money to the senior center because we only have one, so it serves the entire city. Our gymnasium is like that. When you look at the list of the money spent, our gymnasium, we only have one gym. So all the parks pay. They're basically like a pro rata share into it. We only have one adult baseball field, and this is not purely adult, it's young adult, but I mean, it can go from anywhere from thirteen to... we used to have the Inland Empire Baseball, you know, it has major league lines. We don't have any other field like this in our city. This is one unique one. We only have one Ridge Riders. There is no other equestery in center. So to me, some of these investments are great. We're asking to do a master plan to get on a grant list to try to get grant money and do whatever improvements we can, similar to the Dog Park coming up next, or one of the items. We need to get them approved so we can go out and seek grant money that's available. If you don't have them approved and master plans in place, you're not eligible for the money. You basically have to have shovel-ready projects. So I think it's fantastic. I'm sorry about what happened at the Planning Commission and the Community Service Commission. They got accused of being on the take and being all corrupt, and it was very unfortunate. The type of stuff that goes on with some members of the public addressing our volunteers that serve on these commissions, who for many years have volunteered themselves in a lot of the same leagues you guys are involved in, and that's very unfortunate to see these personal attacks there. I fully support this.
Thank you. Councilwoman Lane?
Yeah, I just want to thank everybody for coming out tonight, and you know, this is... it's a beautiful park, and we need to protect and preserve our open spaces. You know, we have great parks throughout our entire community, and as a council member, I'm proud of the improvements we've made to all the parks in West Covina. Kids and families, you know, you guys, everybody deserves open space and place to go play and have fun and recreate, and this park is truly unique, and it's very special in our community. But we do need a master plan for this park so we can go ahead and make improvements and apply for grants and funding, although no money will be spent tonight, but we need to do this so we can plan for the future. And, you know, I want to thank all the volunteers that do such a great job in our parks, and you make them look beautiful. You take pride in our community. You take pride with the kids, and I want to thank you for that. And with that, I'm in favor of approving the master plan for Maverick Ridge Riders Park this evening, so, thank you.
Councilwoman Arbrus?
I'm also in favor. I agree. I've seen so many people out there just volunteering at the park, and it's just amazing how many people just put their blood, sweat, and tears into their city. Again, it's for the whole city. It's for the whole community. It's for even people outside of the city. I love to grab my boys and go over and grab Classic Burger, and how many people can say that they can go to a park and sit and watch a ballgame and then walk over and watch the mounted police. My kids enjoy that. Like Melissa had said, you know, she's from the north side of town, and she got interested in horses. She doesn't have horse property. People can come out and ride. Keep our open space. I also think that the parks, like they said, it's a labor of love, and I'm in support of adopting the master plan.
Thank you. First off, I want to thank everybody for coming out. Sometimes we take a lot of things for granted, and if the voices aren't heard, sometimes there's misinterpretations. But you know, I've been here over twenty years, and I think if you were to rank one of my proudest votes or accomplishments as a council member, it is the creation of the Maverick Field Ridge Rider Complex, and Cameron and I go back to the Maverick Development Group. I still have the baseball that we threw out the first day that everybody signed, and then I look around the community, and I look at all the things. You know, my background, as I told the coach, was I took a class in the first aid. I was a Parks and Recreation major, so if you look at the votes on the council from me, it's usually for Parks and Recreation. We created a historical facility over on the east side of town on Cameron. We created Hearst Ranch on the west side of town. We put a track in at Hollingsworth School on the south side of town. We've lit every ballfield in town so that the parents could come out and watch their kids at night so they didn't... so that Little League could go into the evening hours. So yeah, some of the criticism that people may have about, you know, money's being spent on parks and stuff, I'm guilty. I'll be the first to admit it, but it's because of these guys here, it's because of the statistics that Cameron Saylor laid out there, which I had no idea on the scholarships. And Cameron and I did a video back in the, I think about the 2000 timeframe, on the economics of baseball, and he's exactly right. I mean, all these people that come into town for tournaments and stay in our hotels, I mean, that's really what, you know, doesn't drive everything, but it's like icing on the cake. So, having the master plan in place, like councilmember Tuey said, can allow us to apply for grant funds and other things, and it kind of gives us a plan as to where to go. There's a lot of charitable organizations out there that want to donate money, and we have, you know, a school that plays there. We have little leagues that feed into that field, and, you know, I played there. I think Mike Vieira and I were probably there at the same time. I tried out for thoroughbred when there was gopher holes and horses in the outfield. So yeah, it was something that would came from the community as a partnership, and it should be preserved forever in West Covina. I'd be so sad if that park went away. And we have had, as one of the members of the public did speak, we've had developers come forward and try and do condominiums in that area, and councilwoman Sanderson, you know, bless her heart, she stood up at the time when that happened and opposed it, and we all supported her, and so that didn't happen. But ultimately, it's because of you coming out tonight, you know, and speaking reinforces the feelings that we have on the council, I think, towards parks and recreation and in our communities. So with that, if there's no other comments...
I'd like to make a motion to approve, and the one other thing I never heard, Mayor Hereford, is what was that grade you got from Coach Mansmanian?
I got a C, I don't know.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion. Actually, we're gonna have a resolution. Could we have a heading of the resolution, and then we'll have a motion?
It's resolution number 2011-10, a resolution of the City Council of the City of West Covina, California, approving Maverick Ridge Riders Park master plan.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion by Tuey, second by Lane. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries four-zero. Thank you. Okay, we're gonna move to item number eight.
Good night. Thanks for coming.
Take care, Brandon.
You're welcome. Is someone gonna get Shelley?
Yeah. Okay, if we could have everybody tone it down a little bit. Excuse me, Mr. Ogden. Assembly member, representative? You guys could go upstairs. Thank you. Okay, this next item is a public hearing. Matter set for public hearing consists of an amendment to the Palm View Park master plan to consider allowing ballfield lights to remain on until 10:00 PM Monday through Saturday. City clerk, will you verify proper legal notice has been given?
Yes, it's verified.
This time, I shall open the public hearing on the Palm View Park master plan amendment number three. There will first be the presentation of the staff report. Then we shall hear from those in favor of the proposal and then those opposed. Finally, those in favor will have an opportunity to give rebuttal to any testimony received in opposition. Mr. Pasmat, who will give the staff report?
I believe Mr. Anderson will start the report. Palm View Park is located on the southwest corner of Puente Avenue and Lark Ellen Avenue. The baseball field is located on the southwest corner of the park and is adjacent to an elementary school on the south and single-family residences to the west. So the ballfield's here, this is Lark Ellen, Puente. So the ballfield's here, and there's a single-family neighborhood over this direction. Steve Bennett, president of Pacific Coast Little League, is requesting the extension of evening use of baseball field lighting from 9:00 PM to 10:00 PM. Mr. Bennett has expressed concern about the safety of players if light should turn off before a baseball game is finished. He's also expressed that the number of participants has increased as well as the number of games the league needs to accommodate. Ballfield lights were approved in 1995. Lighting was originally allowed on Wednesday through Saturday. In 2000, use of ballfield lighting was expanded to include Monday and Tuesday, and therefore the league is currently allowed to use lighting from Monday through Saturday until 9:00 PM. A joint meeting of the Planning Commission, Community Services Commission was held on January 25, 2011. At that joint meeting, testimony was received by Mr. Bennett and two other league representatives about the need for the extension. Testimony was also received from a neighboring property owner about concerns with the extension of the lights. After discussion, the Planning Commission and Community Services Commission recommended approval of Palm View Park master plan amendment number three, with a condition to review the extended use of ballfield lighting at the conclusion of the 2011 season. During this review, noise generation, security issues, and other nuisances by the use and its effect on nearby residential properties would be reviewed to determine if the extension to 10:00 PM is appropriate or if additional restrictions or conditions are needed in order to mitigate those effects. Community Service Commission voted six-zero to recommend approval, and the Planning Commission voted four-to-one to recommend approval. That concludes staff's presentation.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions by the city council? Okay, hearing none. At this time, I will entertain the speaker cards. We'll have the speakers in favor speak first, and then those in opposition. First speaker is Brent Reiniker.
Good evening. As we can tell just by this evening, West Covina is a baseball city, and I think we take a lot of pride in the fact that a lot of great players have come out of this city in the major leagues, going up through the college system, and a lot of them have started here, a lot at Pacific Coast Little League. They've started throughout the entire city. I played here. Half of our board played at this field. This field is the reason why I have my kids here now, and it's grown, and I've seen the growth of the Little League, and you take pride. You take pride in that, the fact that they ask where you're from, and you're proud to tell them we play at Pacific Coast. You know, are we the biggest Little League out there? No, we're not, but we take pride in who we are in this city and in our district and throughout the state. But we've seen tremendous growth, I mean, from when I played, when there's just a handful of teams, maybe six, seven teams, to last year we added a team, this year we've added another team, and we expect that in the next coming years, we're gonna be adding even more. And we, to be able to accommodate those teams, we have to add more scheduling to our season, and daylight doesn't always permit that. And just to see the kids come through and the love for baseball that they have, being able to accommodate all those kids and being able to put them out on that field and building their skills up and building their confidence in themselves up, it's a blessing to be a part of that, to be able to mentor a kid up through that system. And I don't know, I just take a lot of pride in our field and what we do there, and I think it's amazing to be able to be a part of that and to help bring kids up through that system, and I'm just, I just wanted to say a few words about that, and that I do approve, and I am in favor of this.
Thank you. Jim Lanu?
Good evening, Mayor Protemp, council members. Obviously, I'm here tonight to assist you and hopefully persuade you to pass the amendment, the master plan number three for Palm View Park. I'm a coach there, but not only a coach, I'm also a parent there of my son and my daughter, who we used to play there. My son's currently in the farm division coming up from T-ball. We've grown tremendously in the next, in the last two, three years. Being involved in the board in the last two years, to see the youth come out, our T-ball division is now up to six teams. We had three teams, you know, just two years ago, and those, obviously, that youth is gonna move up to the minor or major division that these lights are gonna assist. Unfortunately, right now with that nine o'clock cutoff time, it's not a soft cutoff. I mean, it's not... it's nine o'clock, and it is shut down automatically. Could be in the middle of a ball plate, could be in the middle of a pitch, could be in the middle of a ball being hit. It's only a matter of time until one of our kids, one of our youth get hurt. I don't want to see that come back to the city. I don't want to see that come back to the board or to the Little League. And because we are one of the smallest Little Leagues in the, in the, in the city, I don't want to see us kind of take, you know, any type of heat from that. So, asking of small favors, Coach Masmanian said earlier, we're, we out here for the kids to teach them. We need that additional time to make sure they, they, they play that, those additional games that they're going to need. We, we play 24 games in a season, and we condense those into 12 weeks. And that's what we're talking about, a 52-year, you know, a 52-week year, 12 weeks out of the year that we extend these lights to 10:00 PM. So, ask you to consider amending the Palm View Park and extending lights to 10:00 o'clock. Thank you.
Thank you. Eddie Castillo? No Eddie Castillo? Okay, Steve Bennett?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor Protem, members of the council, city staff. My name is Steve Bennett. I'm the current president of Pacific Coast Little League. I'm a lifelong resident of the city of West Covina, and I too played at Pacific Coast Little League when I was a young Little Leaguer. I'm here tonight to ask you to approve Amendment Number Three to Palm View Park's Master Plan to extend the lights to 10:00 PM. Currently, our athletic field lights turn off at 9:00 PM. Depending on whose watch you look at, it could be 9:05, it could be 9:10, but ultimately, they turn off around 9:00 o'clock. Over the last three seasons that I've been on the Board of Directors at Pacific Coast Little League, we've seen wonderful growth. You've heard from a couple of our wonderful representatives tonight about the growth. One of the things that, it's hard to say in this economy is growing anything. It's a tough economy, but we've had the luxury of growing in all of those seasons. We've added enough teams that last year, we had to add an actual night, on a Thursday night, where we had two games in that night. The first game started at 5:00. The second game started at 7:15. And we do our best to make sure, as one of our coaches said, that nobody gets hurt by turning off the lights or ending the game in time to, you know, ensure that there's safety of the kids. But, you know, like I mentioned with the time, sometimes it happens with a watch being off. Now, with the current schedule that we have, we currently play our younger kids first. And we know they're younger, need to get back home. But our older kids, well, they, they play the later game. In the major division of Little League, we're not allowed to set a time limit per se. So, the first game, we put a two-hour time limit. The second game, we aren't really able to do that. So, it ends when the lights are about to turn off. What we're actually doing is we're shorting our youth in the league of some playtime, trying to give them a full experience. As you can imagine, you know, I've got wonderful volunteers. And if you look around here, I know half the audience left, but a number of the people here are in support of this. If I could have everyone who is in support of this, if you guys could please stand for a second. These are those men and women who are out there keeping up those parks that you guys talked about. Guys, I appreciate that. Thank you. With the upcoming season, we've grown again. We've added more teams. We need to increase our nights to two or three nights. Now, in last season, we only had a couple of nights that extended past the nine o'clock shut off. If we really look at the math, we're only talking about a handful of games that may go past the nine o'clock time. We're not looking to run games all the way to 10:00 o'clock. We're looking to just continue our schedule the way it is. Start a game at 5:00, start another game at 7:15, and allow those children to go ahead and finish their game. At that point, they'll exit the field, we'll turn the lights off, in most cases, probably by 9:20, 9:30, maybe 9:40 at the latest. We're not looking for a regular every-night occurrence. We respect and completely understand the neighbors nearby. We have a great league, and, and I can't speak highly enough about the people that I work with on the board. In three years, I've had the pleasure of working with some great people. I would like to see this light extended, obviously, for the benefit of our kids, the kids in the city of West Covina, but also for the parents that want to come out and watch their kids play a game in the evening or on a Saturday afternoon, so that their kids can learn teamwork, commitment, perseverance, dedication, all the things that come with Little League baseball. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, I ask that you amend the amendment tonight, approve the amendment tonight, to extend the lights to 10:00 PM. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes the speakers in favor. We have one speaker in opposition. Joyce Husky?
My name's Joyce Husky, and I live by Palm View Park, and I have for over 30 years. I have two kids that are currently involved in organized sports in the city of West Covina and Covina, and they have been for over 10 years. They've played at Edgewood School, currently playing there. They've played at Cortez Park, Shadow Oak Park, Cameron Park, and Covina High School. I just wanted to let you know, so you don't think that I'm anti-sports, because my kids are currently involved in sports as it is. I oppose the committee's recommendation for a trial basis, and ask that you deny Pacific Coast Little League's request to extend nighttime use of the lights from 9:00 to 10:00 PM at Palm View Park. We were there for the committee meeting on January 25, me and my husband, but he's not here tonight, opposing the change. I believe because of our objection, they decided it's fair to try out for one season to see if they can get any other feedback from residents before it's made permanent, because it will greatly impact many residents in that area. Of course, I oppose the change, but let me make one thing clear. I realize you can also not accept the committee's recommendation and decide, and decide to vote for the request of extended use of lights from 9:00 to 10:00 PM and forego the trial period. I do not feel this is fair, because Pacific Little League failed to inform the committee that they have had, not saying they will, but they have had in the past a winter baseball season and have hosted tournaments during this, during the summer. With that said, it is possible that the extended use of the lights from 9:00 to 10:00 PM could be for more than just the three months a year they are indicating. Now, they may or may not do that five days a week, I don't know. That six days a week that we may be subjects, the residents would have to put up with an extra hour of night of lights, noise, and traffic. I don't know about you, but I would like a little quiet time around 9:00 PM at night to relax and get ready for the work week without this added burden. Even Covina High football games are over by 9:30, and that's only one night a week. And they are high school kids. These kids are nine, 10, 11, and 12-year-olds. I know there's concerns about the safety of the children, but if they know the lights turn off at 9:00, they should end the games by 8:45. They have two fields, so if it's, if they need to start that game earlier, maybe they should use the other field for the younger kids and have their older kids start the game at 6:30. On a final note, one must also be concerned with the added costs. With the state of California going through a budget crisis, which will in turn affect city budgets, the city, the city should be thinking about reducing our budget, not adding to it, obviously, the lighting cost for an extra hour. I don't know what that is, but I imagine it's something. In the end, we may not be talking just about three months for the extended use of the lights a year, but possibly six, if they choose to have a winter ball season or host tournaments, because there's no restriction regarding, you know, just this season. It's basically, if they choose to, then we're subject to that, which will greatly impact the area. So, please consider your vote wisely, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, that can, or actually, that, the people that spoke in favor, if anybody wants to rebut that comment, please come forward. Mr. Bennett?
Mr. Mayor, thank you for allowing me to come back up. As for the, the time, you know, extension, as she mentioned, you know, we're not looking to extend this for an hour guaranteed every night. What we're looking to do is just extend it long enough to complete the game. So, it could be a matter of 10 minutes, it could be a matter of five minutes. It may not even be a matter at all. As I mentioned, last year, we only had, like, three games that we would have had a situation where the game ended because the lights were about ready to turn off. So, we're not talking about, you know, an entire season. On the subject of winter ball and tournaments, I'm sure you guys are aware, I'm not sure if the audience or the member of the community was aware, we have to actually submit, as a youth sports organization, a facility use application to use the facility for winter ball and also for tournaments. If there is an issue, it's obviously declined by the Community Services Department. Last season, we did not host a winter ball season. However, two seasons ago, we did host a winter ball season. And the reason why we did not host last season is because myself and our board decided that we were not going to impose on the neighbors multiple years in a row, a winter ball season. We were, however, selected last year to host a tournament, which was the section tournament for nine and 10-year-olds for Little League. It's kind of a fairly prestigious tournament. It's the second level of the international tournament, and so we were pretty honored to, excuse me, to host that. And it actually went very well. We had communities from Upland and Temple City coming out to this tournament, and we were complimented, as you've heard tonight about Little League facilities and baseball facilities, we were complimented about how great our facility looks and how wonderful of a host we were. I think that goes volumes for what we're trying to promote here in the city. Again, I, I would love to work with the neighbors nearby to work out any type of issues that we have. We've tried putting signs up nearby to respect their differences. But if you have any questions or comments or anything that you'd like me to answer, I'm available for that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Did you have a question? Councilwoman Sanderson?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for coming this evening. I did attend the joint meeting as well and observed everything that was being said. And one of the things that I wanted to clarify is, you guys were going to be stopping at 9:30 anyway, or there was a time that you weren't going to go to 10:00, you just needed the lights to get safely to the parking lot, et cetera, et cetera. That's kind of what's discussed. Is that correct?
That was actually what one of the, I believe, Planning Commissioners had mentioned. I'm not sure which one, but he had mentioned that he was concerned about the lights being on to allow the parents to get to their cars. That's not a reason why I'm applying for this extension. I know that there's lighting in the actual park, which will assist with that.
Okay, okay.
Obviously, the, the field lights are very bright, and, and it is a much brighter atmosphere with those on, and I'm sure parents would appreciate that. But considering the budget shortfalls, as the resident mentioned, it's not something that I'm looking to do for the benefit of the city.
Okay, and one last question. I, I, the resident spoke as well at that last meeting, but it seemed to me it was more of an issue with the traffic over in a back corner, people coming and going that where you block off normally anyway, and that you were going to deal with that and address that, was what I understood as well.
Correct, Madam Councilwoman. Actually, what I have here, and if I can give this to the city clerk, this may be helpful to you. These are maps, actually, closer view of our park. And what you'll notice in that map, to, to the left of our baseball field, you'll see the residential houses, much like you saw on the slide here tonight. There's a driveway that runs between the Puente Avenue parking lot that runs back to what is considered our snack bar concession stand. During the season, we limit access to that extensively, because obviously, there are children walking around, and we use it strictly for the delivery of product to our snack bar and supplies, in some cases, field maintenance equipment. But in the preseason, we do have substantially more traffic. As you guys have mentioned, the volunteers are in there digging and shoveling and working and cleaning and doing whatever they need to do to get this league back up and running. And, you know, it spends three to six months dormant in most cases, and so there's some weed pulling and various other stuff. So, yeah, sometimes we're carrying heavy equipment or tools, and we do park in there to go ahead and, and facilitate the easy use of, of the equipment. Does that answer your question, Madam Councilwoman?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, thank you very much. I just knew that it was, I didn't really think maybe so much as the lighting, but that the activity in that general vicinity, and then I knew you guys were aware of it, and that was the based on the trial period, is what I understood.
Yes, ma'am. And like I said, during the season, we limit that extensively. We try to do our deliveries outside of when the children are there. It is a safety concern, obviously, for us. If we notice anyone who abuses that, we do address that very quickly and try to handle that.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Two?
Not a question of him, it's a question to make my statements.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I appreciate everyone coming out. I've lived near this park for many years. For 17 years, I lived, it's going to be a joke, I don't mean it badly, but unfortunately, near Steve Bennett. So, for 17 years, I lived either on Idaho or Tolent Street, which is near that area. And had we stayed at that house, my son obviously would have played baseball there. He was two years old when we moved from the Tolent Street House. I think the, the record speaks for itself there. I'm not necessarily, I'm not in favor at all of a trial basis. I think their record speaks for itself since we approved lights over there. I believe they have been great neighbors. The, the league is, is a great league over there, and it's one of the, the only league we, well, it's the, we have two leagues on the north side, but I mean, I believe that league has done a great job over there in managing the lights. We did approve all the lights, most of the lights, and even what Ms. Husky spoke of, most of the lights in those other sports groups that your kids have been involved in, almost every other lights in the city are 10 o'clock. This is one of the few that are not. Edgewood Track, the lights stay on until 10 o'clock to allow you to walk. We have basketball lights there for the, the youth basketball group and soccer that, that use that facility. But it's actually been a godsend. The, the difference is, I want to make sure whatever we put in there, similar to what we have at other places, once you are done playing, we have the ability to go to 50% to make sure it's still bright enough to get off safely, but the, the full lights are not on. I can see the, the, after a football game, the lights are on till 10 o'clock at West Covina High. So are the tennis courts that light up the tennis courts. And that's been a, pretty much, I can hear the band practice every day when they're practicing on the field. And I, it's something we just deal with. And I don't even live that close to them, but I can still hear them. And I have Hollincrest Band that marches down my street, so we can't get to our home during certain times of the day when the Hollincrest Middle School Band is marching. We park and have to walk to our house. So, but like I said, I think it's a great facility. Steve's done a great job there, except when he's made me run around the bases during some of the opening days, which I don't appreciate. But I will, again, just like the accolades I gave to the last group, there's clearly a lot of time put in there and a lot of effort. And I believe the, the group, the parents there have done a great job. Obviously, we have not received a lot of complaints over the 15 years I've been on the City Council. And you've had lights for a lot of those years. So, I think that speaks volumes, not only to the current administration, but when the former Assistant Police Chief here, Darryl Myrick, and his wife Roxanne ran it, whether it was John Lee, Eddie Perez, I, I mean, you've had a lot of presidents over the years. We have not heard the complaints there, and it speaks more of the parents there. And I just would appreciate that. I also don't want to make sure we set the standard too tough. I believe that when they want to use lights, in addition, it may not be this group that you have to apply to the, the Community Service Commission to our director, because I definitely don't want to lose out on regional tournaments. And the city has a city championship with all the Little Leagues, that they play against each other, and I don't want to limit that in case we do that. And I don't think it is so easily to say this, to have them play on the other field, which is on Roland Elementary, because at a lot of their time during their baseball season, it is not daylight that late. So, they would actually be playing in the dark, which to me is more dangerous for the kids, to use the Roland Elementary School additional field they have. They have to use a lighted field. And the whole reason we did lighted fields, just so everyone understands, and I'm one of the councilmembers that guilty of lighting all the sports fields, that we wanted to make sure parents had an opportunity after they got off of work to interact with their kids, not where it was either mom or dad or the grandparents, but as best as possible, the family as a unit to get there. And that was the whole concept of using the lights and allowing lighted games. Otherwise, they play the games at 3:00, and no one would be there. And I think that would be a tragedy. So, I'm in favor of this.
Okay, let me, I meant to close the public hearing, I didn't do that. I'm going to close the public hearing to all comments. So, councilmembers, Councilwoman Lane?
Yeah, I just want to thank Mr. Bennett and all the volunteers. You guys do a great job out there. And I'm really proud that you guys are, the participation has gone up, and more kids are playing. And I just want to thank you guys again for all your hard work. And it's proving that, you know, kids, they love baseball, so, and all sports. And, and it's great that you give of your time and, and everything you do. So, with that, I'm, I believe with the increased participation and the safety issues out there, I'm in favor of amending the master plan this evening.
Councilwoman Sanderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also want to thank everybody that volunteers and works hard for our community and makes it what it is. I live by three parks, which is really awesome, and that's the reason I bought my house. And the lights stay on till 10:00. And we have a baseball park, a horse park, and then you can see Cortez Park in a distance. And over the weekends, you hear all three of the parks with their loudspeakers going, and the kids cheering, and the horns, and it, it's, it's a great thing. And, and, but I also understand where the residents coming from. But I know Steve, and I know that you guys will work it out and make sure to please these residents, and, and that's what we're here to help, you know, make sure happens as well. So, with that, I would definitely support a motion to approve the Planning Commission, Community Services Commission recommendation. Again, thank you for your volunteerism, and I know you guys will work with the residents and, and make sure, and any communications we need with city staff or whatever to, to remedy those kind of issues. But, you know, I think it's great to see the activities in the parks. That's what they're for. So, thank you very much. That's what they're for, so thank you very much.
Any other comments?
I can make that a motion.
Second? Let's call for heading the resolution.
Resolution number 2011-11, a resolution of the city council of the city of West Covina, California, approving Palmview Master Park Plan Amendment Number Three.
A motion by Sanderson?
Yep.
Second by Toohey? Yes. Second by Toohey. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries 5-0. Thank you for coming. Okay, we're going to move to public hearing number nine. This matter set for public hearing consists of adoption, of adopting a resolution of the city council, setting and decreasing certain fee and charges with city clerk verified pre- legal notices given. It's getting late for me.
That's verified.
Okay, at this time, I shall open the public hearing on this matter. There will first be the presentation, the staff report, then we shall hear comments from the public. Mr. Pazmat, who will read, who will present the staff report?
Ms. McNeil will do that report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. This public hearing before you this evening is to consider a resolution that would adjust fees for licensed childcare in Cameron Community Center. The adjusted fees are outlined in Exhibit A. And of course, it's important to note that the fees are only intended to recover the cost, not exceed the cost of providing the city service. The first item before you is the adoption of preschool fees. In order to improve budget projections, staff is recommending a conversion from a licensed childcare program to a licensed preschool program at Palmview Community Center. It would serve ages three to four, and it would begin in April 2011. We currently have about 30 families on a waiting list that are interested in this program, and in order to complete our application to the State of California Community Care Licensing Division, we need the city council to review these fees and hopefully adopt and approve them for implementation. The second matter before you is a request from staff to slightly reduce the Cameron Community Center's open gym drop-in fee. The, what we've seen in the first two quarters of the fiscal year is a decline in our open gym drop-in, and what we've heard the participants say is that they are opting to attend other local facilities where the cost is slightly cheaper by about $1. So, Cameron Community Center is requesting that we adjust our fees by about the same amount in order to remain competitive with other municipalities. Because the, or I should say, while the revenue from the open gym drop-in fees is not a significant portion of Cameron's revenue stream, however, it's, the spillover effect from that revenue stream is vital for Cameron Community Center. What we often see is that participants for the open gym drop-in often enroll in our adult sports leagues, they enroll their families in our classes and programs and other Cameron services, and that portion does happen to be a vital revenue stream for Cameron Community Center. So, with that, we would recommend that the proposed fees and service charges for preschool be adopted this evening. If the council chose to do that, that would provide $19,600 in revenue between April and the end of the fiscal year. And additionally, if the city council were to approve the reduction in Cameron Community Center open gym drop-in fees, we could see a reduction in revenue for the remainder of the fiscal year of about $1,500. But it's very important to note that by having this small reduction, we'll safeguard over $100,000 in registration through our programs and services at Cameron. That concludes my report. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions with staff? Okay, seeing none, and move to the public testimony portion of the public hearing, and I have no cards, so seeing that there are no speakers, I'll close the public testimony portion. Any comments? Councilwoman Sanderson?
Just would like to thank staff for all the time spent and would support a motion to approve the resolution.
I second.
Okay, we'll have the head in the resolution.
Resolution number 2011-12, a resolution of the city council of the city of West Covina, California, setting and decreasing certain fees.
Okay, we had a motion by Sanderson, second by Armbrust. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries 5-0. Okay, item 10 is a public hearing. We did carry that over to the next meeting, but if anybody didn't think they could make it and wanted to make a comment, they're welcome to. I have some cards. Is there anybody here that wanted to speak on that item? Okay, that'll be carried to the next meeting. Okay, item 12, the placement of the city initials on West Covina Hillside. Staff has brought back just another report. This would be a mayor's volunteer committee. Would not use any funding to build or construct or maintain the letters, and I would have the committee work with staff to determine a location. As we stated at the last meeting, this is kind of a community spirit-type event, and we would work as a volunteer committee. And if there isn't a location anywhere, we won't do it, but I think it's a great teamwork-type project, and I think it'd be good for the community. So, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Moved by Hereford, second by Lane. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries 5-0. City council, community, first off, any AB, 1, 2, 3, 4 reports? No? Okay. City council, community development commission, we have no reports. Oh, actually, we do have, councilmember Karen Armbrust has a request. Councilmember Armbrust?
I've had a couple of constituents calling me in requests for a dog park. I know that the city has gotten many phone calls in need of a dog park, so I was hoping that we would be able to seek the Proposition 84 state park grant funding for a dog park in West Covina, and I'm just asking for council to be able to vote on that.
If that's a motion, I'll second it.
Okay, here's the motion. Motion by Armbrust, second by Sanderson. Councilmember Toohey?
No, I was just going to say, I greatly appreciate this. We have talked before with Lloyd and many other people before about a dog park, and also to look if there's even more locations based on grant funding. I would support additional dog parks throughout the city based on the grants. I support this.
Okay, Councilwoman Lane?
Yeah, I think this is a great idea, and I want to thank councilmember Armbrust for bringing it forward. You know, it's great. A lot of people have been wanting a dog park in the community and a place where they can have their dogs and go and recreate with them and have some fun. So, with that, thank you again for bringing it forward, and I support it.
I agree. I think that we've brought this idea forward a couple of times. We need to do it. Upon the agendizing of this, we did make a call to the guy who owns the land down there behind PetSmart, so we're going to get a meeting with him and talk to him about potential use of that. But as councilmember Toohey says, there's other locations too. So, with that, we have a motion and second. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries 5-0. Okay, any other councilmember comments? We'll move to adjournments. We have a few adjournments in memory of individuals in the community. First off, Mr. Hank Warren, a longtime resident of West Covina, who tragically lost his life in a home fire last week. I think we all read about that in the paper, and our thoughts and prayers are with his family and friends. Mr. Michael Hughes, the brother of senior commissioner John Hughes, who I believe was from Chicago, has been out here numerous times for our Fourth of July event, a real great guy. And John Hughes, stellar member of our community, will, his family will greatly miss his brother. And Mr. Salvador Bolanos, father of Maria Delira of our finance department, one of our city staff members. Her father passed away, and our thoughts and prayers are with her.